Work session to order. Can I get a roll call, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Davis. Ms. Fishu. Mr. Fassal- Fassol. Ms. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Gillum.
Here.
All right. We don't have a quorum, but this is just discussion about our, uh, a work session about the capital projects planning, so we're just gonna go ahead and continue to have that. So, let's talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we, as you all know, we, uh, we did the, Trane Company did the audit of all of our buildings and went through and, and there was a whole, long, long list of things. Some of those things are being taken care of now through the projects that we approved earlier this year through the EESI loan. Some of the things that we were in that audit that we needed to address were taken care of with Esther money. So, we've, we've, we've taken care of a lot, of a few things, but the Esther money's done. I think everybody understands that, that it's, it's, it's all been spoken for and it's, it's, it's not gonna be coming back that we can see. So, what we did over the past couple, few weeks, Mr. Nguyen and myself and, and Dr. Duncan and, uh, and Jamie Tippett went through the, the train assessment that they gave us on what we need. And we prioritized things, and, and we're not trying to say this is everything we have to do, but these are the things that, that we felt like and what the experts have told us, uh, that over the next five to, you know, five to eight years, uh, if we don't address some of these things, that it, we're gonna have some issues. And I guess what we wanted to do tonight was to talk about what some of the highest priority things are and then just discuss, uh, kinda get some input from the board on, uh, on how to, how to move forward. As you can see, if you look through the handout that I gave the board members, it's this one that starts, it's got red on it and red's for DES and then there's a page orange in it, uh, North Stewart, black, the middle school, and gold, the high school. So, there's four pages there. And as we talk about these things, we know, or we've identified what short-term is the most important things we need to take care of. And as all of you probably know, number one is, if you go to the second page, is the roof in North Stewart. And we've had different people look at this and give us a, an estimate and even one company has come in and done an assessment for us, Corial Company, uh, I think y'all met, we all met them at the TSBA, and they did a full assessment of all of our roofs. They didn't charge us anything for it. They did that because they're trying to establish business in the state of Tennessee. And this number that I have here, nine hundred thousand, that's actually, this week they gave me a, a hard quote, uh, it would be around eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand if we, if you went with their product. Uh, now, there are other roofers out there that it would be a different product, a different type of roof, uh, that would be cheaper. Uh, Jamie, do you remember the, what the rubber roof that we now have on it to replace?
It was about three seventy, the last one we got.
Okay, and that, that has a very short...
Short-term.
It's a short-term solution. Now, I'm not trying to, I'm not, I, I'm not trying to sway it any, any way, I'm just giving you the facts on the guarantees. The eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar roof on North Stewart would be a, there's a twenty-year guarantee on it. And I will make note of that so you can, if you ever ask questions about it. I think with, uh, the rubberized roof, it's, it's five.
What was the estimate savings you, we talked about with them, um, if we went with a white roof? There was an energy savings of so much over a twenty-year...
Their, their product is called Dyna-Last.
Mm-hmm.
It's a, and it's, it's a hard composite. Uh, now, they did an energy audit, uh, Corial did an energy audit also, and they estimated over a course of twenty years, with a white roof, it would reduce your energy cost about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's, now, that's them and that's their product and, you know, they're trying to sell people on, on their product, which is, you know, I'll just say that out front. But, uh, they've done, they've been in business for a long time and they, so that, that's the first, we believe, and, and it's, that's why we're having this discussion, the first and foremost need that we have in terms of a, a major capital improvement. Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Yes?
On the, on the eight thirty-nine or nine, or even one, you want to call it by that, is that replacing every square foot of roof up there or are we laying off in sections?
It's a total roof.
Where the third, fourth grade hallway is.
They're gonna tear off everything and put everything up.
Everybody.
I mean, they're gonna go do a complete, they're gonna strip it down, everything that's on there right now, which is layers and layers of stuff, and then come in and do the rest. Excuse me.
The gym?
They're not doing the gym.
The gym is not being done, no.
Right.
Yeah, we already did the gym. Yeah, we just did a gym roof.
But all the rest of, other than the gym?
All the rest of it, other than the gym, being the foreign offering place.
And that's down to the decking, the metal decking, everything.
Okay, the, the one that you got right here, you got nine hundred thousand on there, you said, this one coming out of Oklahoma, give you eight thirty-nine?
That was a, the nine hundred thousand's what they told me originally, that was just a ballpark.
Okay.
But he actually sent me, they sent me a, a thing, and they understand and we all understand, we'll have to, you know, bid, but it's how you write the bid, the specifications that you want, what type of roof you want. We've gotta make a decision on that because one's gonna be cheaper than the other. And so, uh...
So, I think you gotta compare apples to apples, right? So, you, at least have a twenty-year roof. I think is the, if you're, if you gotta bid for a twenty-year roof, then you look for a bid for a twenty-year roof. If we decide that we wanna go with a five-year roof, then we look for a bid for a five-year roof. And it sounds like we've got several of those. Uh, if we went with a five-year roof, it'd be one point five million to replace it over twenty years. If we did it four times, it'd be a one and a half million, uh, dollars.
Save a half by doing it, going ahead instead of being, 'cause sometimes cheaper's not better. Sometimes it's better to have the better product, get a longer lifespan out of something.
And if you take, even if you take a, of, an estimate of two forty savings over that course of that twenty years...
Five-year, ninety-nine thousand's about what we, I mean, that's what it would roughly be. So, you're talking about over half in, in savings over, going with the cheaper roof.
So, I think that's just, that, that's nothing that we're gonna make a decision on tonight. We're not making any decisions, we're just talking. So, I'm just saying if we're, if we're gonna make bids, we need to make, make sure the bids are apples to apples. Mark?
Any questions about, Matt, does it, I know we're not making, but y'all aren't voting on anything, but if there's anybody that's having questions about that being probably the number-one priority, if there's anybody that thinks there's something else that's more important, I'm, I'm willing, you know, I'd like to hear it because, you know, uh, if, when we decide what we are gonna do and how we're gonna do it, uh, it's probably gonna be a while before it gets done because there, you can't have kids in the building if you tear the roof completely off down to the, to the frame and then put another one on.
Well, there's definitely something that has to be done, we know that. I mean, out of all the problems that we've had over the last couple of years, it's becoming because of the roof in North Stewart, so...
Right.
Absolutely needs to be something that needs to be the high priority.
I agree.
Um, yeah, and that is, that was the number-one thing that, aside from what Trane actually did for them, that was their number-one thing too, that they said that we needed to do.
We need to take care, yes, they, they agree. Of course, they would rather see us, and I'm not, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, the Aircon HVAC company would rather see us replacing all of that.
Oh, true.
HVACs, and that, and their estimate in that audit for that roof was a lot more than what, what this is. You remember we, 'cause you and I talked about that, Darryl, when you saw it, it was a, it was like way over a million. I think it's almost two million dollars because they're not into roof maintenance.
They're not worth in business, that's not...
They have to go out and get us, uh, another contractor.
Right, they're just getting a piece of the pie, is all they're doing there.
Right, they're getting the cost, they're facilitating and they're getting the, by them, you know, dealing with them, and that's something I think we can do ourselves as far as putting a roof on. I think that we can...
Well, this company out of Oklahoma, like you said, they've been out there for a long time, they're just trying to move their way east. And Oklahoma's somewhere where they deal with high winds, they deal with a lot of different kinds of, of storms and things, so they definitely have to know what they're doing or they wouldn't be in business.
And that was their, when they did their assessment of our buildings, they said that's the one that we definitely need to, sooner than later, take care of that. And they're, you know, and they, and they know it's gonna be bidded, so they're not, they're not just like telling us and then they're gonna get the job, but they understand that.
Okay.
Um, you wanna move on?
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking about getting more questions.
According to the, according to the Trane audit, our, the chiller at Dover Elementary is past the end of life. It's already gone longer than it, than it should. Jamie, you wanna talk about that? Y'all might have heard Jamie says some things about it, what they're having to do to keep it going.
Uh, yeah, um, I'll, it's, I believe, twenty-seven years old now. Um, we have, we have kept it running, um, it's getting to the point now, now, we took, y'all, all remember the high school chillers, we took everything off of those chillers that we could carry over to that one to keep it pretty much running as long as it has. We're out of all of that now. We took all the fan motors, contactors, uh, we even recovered several hundred pounds of refrigerant from the high school chiller to take over there to put on that one. Um, and we're now out of all of that, so it's kinda, if it goes down now, it's pretty much gonna be done.
You can't find parts at all for those now, right?
I mean, we can.
But they're gonna cost...
Uh, but they, they cost, you know, and then, you know, kinda like we said for this one, you're putting it in a twenty-seven-year-old chiller, you know, when you, if you're putting in compressors, things like that.
Then a band-aid on it's all you get.
And, and one of the biggest problems with it is, is, you know, sitting outside for twenty-seven years, the coals in them are now starting to deteriorate and they're starting to seep refrigerant, they're starting to, you know, just kinda fall apart more or less. That's what the big problem is. Um, and if, you know, having somebody out there all the time to add refrigerant, you, just opening up the system all the time to add that, it's just not good for it. You're opening it up for debris, for dirt, for water, you know, it's just not good for that, you know, old of a system, you know, or for any system at that matter. Um, but we're down now, pretty much, um, we're down to one chiller and the other chiller probably runs sixty percent at mo, at best, I would say. Um, so I would say come August, the last two years, July and August, it struggles to cool the building, um, which, you know, Mike and, or Mr. Craig and all of them know, that, you know, they hear it as much as we do, you know, we start getting work orders just one right after another, you know, that, that's where it gets aggravating, it, you know, we can go fix it, but a month later, it's gonna be doing the same thing, or, you know, we're having to do something else to it, or to, you know, so I mean, it's just kinda getting, it's just snowballing, it's not any more nickel-and-dime stuff now, it's the, the major parts in it are now going down, you know, to where we can't really maintain it, um, is the biggest issue with it.
The prob, the problems that we had at one school, I don't remember which school it was, like, yeah, that there was kinda of a, you wanna use a generic brand? That you couldn't even get parts, so you called the eight-hundred number and they never would be replied back. Is this, chillers on this, is the same way you can get a reply back, can't get parts or anything?
No, no, we can get parts for it, um, but like I said, you know, I mean, we can call Trane to get parts for it, um, but, you know, it just, it's just a matter of time, you know, I mean, we can get fan motors and things like that for it, but, you know, if you're having to talk about, you know, ordering two, you know, thirty-thousand-dollar compressors for it, putting on a known unit that's, you know, seeping refrigerant or whatever, it's just not good for the unit, you know, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, to me, but...
Well, you're like, you know, again, it's, it's, it's putting a band-aid on it, it's not gonna help fix the problem. If it, the unit was ten years old, it'd be different, but you're, we're talking about a twenty-seven-year-old unit, so, I mean, how much is it gonna cost us not only for, you know, taking away from maintenance to, to do that job, but also the parts and everything that's gonna cost, you know, over time? So, even if you factor in a ten-year, you know, a ten-year time, it's, it's, those parts are gonna continue to break down.
Well, on this one, Dover Elementary, you look like to me, you've got two of yours at the very top, it says, who's priority? There's gotta be one we can...
What, what are you talking about?
At Dover Elementary, you got a chiller and a roof replacement.
Oh, the roof replacement's on down the roof, that's not a...
It's not a bad check.
No, no, these things are things we need to do over the next five to ten years.
So, chiller's number-one part?
Chiller, it needs to probably, the chiller should've probably been done five years ago.
Yeah, I didn't know about how that roof was.
I mean, if you really get right down to it. Uh, but we, we've been able to make it work. I mean, I, I, I credit them for keeping it going, uh, but yes, that, this isn't in any order except the top one.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Uh, and I, and I probably should've done a better job explaining that, but yeah, the, that's number-one at Dover. You're talking about three or four more years before a roof will be needed at Dover. So, the roof's never been replaced there either, so it's going on twenty-five years. It's going past what, and, and that may, that roof replacement's probably gonna come in cheaper than that if, if you go to do it at Dover, 'cause they're not gonna have to do a complete tear-off, they'll just do a wrap on it because it's still...
It's still in good enough shape.
Somewhat, uh, the integrity of what's on there is still...
Wasn't added to, it wasn't layered.
Right, it hasn't been, you haven't had one layer of tar and, you know, different layers that have been put on like it had at North Stewart since nineteen seventy-four when that building was built, so...
Mike, these chillers, are they the same, kind of the same thing like Trane, you pull us a roof from them, it takes six, eight months before we get in? And if, if it does, and what Jamie's talking about, how, how it's working now, like, yeah, can we buy that much thing?
I mean, come all, July and August, we're gonna be in the same, uh, the only thing I can say is we'll probably have to do the same thing we did here and get rental chillers. If, if that, if it comes to that, if it gets to where it won't cool, um, and, I mean, that's the only thing we could do.
Yeah.
You know, we had to do that here as well, uh, because they just finally completely went out, so we ended up getting rental chillers.
Do you recall what we paid on those a month?
I don't, I'm sorry.
A fourteen thousand.
I think, I was gonna say, I was gonna say fifteen, so, yeah, it was...
So, then you said how much, like, for instance, if, uh, if one of the motors went bad in it, how, how much is a, you know, something to replace in that? You were saying, what, thirty thousand?
Yeah, that's the compressor, yeah.
So, one compressor to replace, I mean, if we can, you know, if we can get it, something rolling soon enough, then wouldn't be as big of a deal.
I just wonder if we could somehow roll it into like what we did with Trane originally, with, you know, on a, on that half percent loan deal.
That's something we need, try to... That's something that, that I can explore if you'd like me to.
Especially if they, yeah, 'cause I mean, if they can roll in on one, that half percent's a lot better than paying anything else.
Right.
That's just a, just a thought.
I'm looking back to the roof. If you use a safe company, for all of these themselves, that made the roof, in case you can negotiate a better price or at least put that vigil out there.
I think if you did all of them at once, you could, but I'm not sure, I'd have to talk, I'd have to talk to, I mean, you'd have to write the bid, but we're gonna do two roofs. Does that make sense?
Or you could say, we wanna bid this roof with the option of this next roof.
I think if it saves enough money, then it might be worth it to explore that, if it's something that needs to be done in the next three to five years.
That's a good idea. You know, looking through these lists, and I know I'm maybe jumping the gun, but it's, if there's a, there's a deviation, you know, you've got some, you know, high-cost things and you have a lot of low-cost things. And I know the low-cost things, they are, you know, kinda what they are, I was just thinking that if you could lump those together, the low-cost things, and then put a, you know, had a list of the hierarchy that you need those, and then, those are the kinda things that I think that we can sum, fund out of fund balance and maybe possibly ask, I was thinking, ask some county commission for like maybe a hundred thousand dollars a year as a capital outlay to fix these, these three or four things that we wanna fix.
We did, we did take out a lot of stuff that's gonna have to be done over the next five years. We took a lot of the smaller things out and we're gonna fund those through the, the normal budget process. You know, what we left on here are, are significant items...
Significant things that we, we can't fund out of our...
Yeah, I, I can't make happy with just, just...
Just the budget.
Just the budget.
Because we have, we have a certain amount every year that we have for capital outlay. So, you, you're saying that you can fund those things with that?
Yeah, through, through his, his maintenance budget, his capital outlay each year.
And what I'm talking about is...
These, these are significant projects that...
Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar things, if we could get the county commission in, in to say, hey, we'll, we'll give you a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year extra on top of your budget, or we'll have that as part of your budget to fix these things and as we, now, that's not gonna take care of the seven hundred thousand dollar roofs and the, the eight hundred thousand dollar, you know, chillers, but that's just an idea.
Well, you know, and we're early days on TESA. You know, right now, we're, we're seeing an increase in TESA funding for next year, but that, that's earmarked towards salaries. You know, I think, from, from some of the feedback I'm seeing, I think what you'll see is there'll be more TESA money put aside for capital projects, 'cause that's one of the, they're hearing that from school districts across the state that, you know, we have no funding source for, for these big capital projects.
Okay.
It takes everything we get through TESA to, to run the day-to-day operations and, you know, that we have, every school district's in the same, but we are, they're patching, putting it on the back burner, let's get one more year out of it, and, uh, and we'll, we'll go again next year and see if we can get the money.
I'll give you an example, uh, it's just like, there, all, all the new safety things that we're being asked to do. Uh, you know, if you build a new building right now, there's certain things that you have to do that put an increase significantly on, on a building. And, uh, the state, I think our safety grant this year was seventy-nine thousand dollars. Well, that, it sounds like a lot of money, but the stuff that they, that after they just did our assessments that we need to do, it's not even close. So, when I met with the, uh, the head of safety for the state, they came down not too long ago and they walked our buildings and, and they said, we're typical of a, a school system like us and with the age of our buildings, where we are, and I'm not meaning to get off into safety, but they asked me if there's one thing that we could do to help y'all. I said, give us a true capital outlay to every district where they can actually get some of these things done that you're suggesting that we do, uh, and at some point, they're gonna be requiring us to do. You know, it's like an unfunded mandate, you know, that you have to do these things, but where's the money come from? And that's kinda where we are now, it's just like, so much of the increase in TESA next year has to go to salaries, 'cause by law, by what year, twenty-twenty, twenty-seven, starting pay for every teacher in the state of Tennessee, the minimum has to be fifty thousand dollars. Well, we're, I guess we're six thousand away from that now. So, it's gonna be, you know, we've gotta make sure that we do that, and when you raise the salaries for the, the starting teachers, guess what happens? Everybody else on the salary scale, their salaries go up too. So, that's, that's where we are as far as that, so I'd like to think that the state's gonna give us more money for our capital projects, but we can't depend on that at this point. That's why I want, that's why we wanted to have this meeting, so we can go through these things and, and y'all can see what we're dealing with and then we can maybe find a way to get these things taken care of. I think it's going, and, and I'm not gonna speak for the county commission or the mayor or anyone else, uh, it, it will take partnership to get a lot of this started. And I, and I can't say that, that, that they're gonna be willing, I, I'm not gonna speak for them again, but I, you know, uh, there, there's, I think it's, it would do us well to ha, start having conversations with them.
One other thing we need, you know, talk, we were talking about EESI and things like that, you know, right now's a terrible time to borrow money. You know, you, bond, I talked to Heather today, bond rates are five and a quarter percent right now, and I, the last bond we let, I wanna say was one and a half, or it was less than two percent, so it's not a good time to, to, to think about letting a bond. So, you know, again, that, that just further complicates things.
That's where if you could talk to Trane, see if we can tie that chiller in.
I, I can have that conversation.
That would be, that would be a big chunk right there that would help.
Yeah, I mean, if you go between a half percent and five and a quarter...
Oh, yeah, five and a quarter, oh, yeah. A lot of money over, over time. Well, Mike, one of the, I know I might be jumping the gun on this, but just looking at this list and, and just over the four schools, you know, the ninety thousand dollars for school's own light replacement, I know, why, why is it that we have twenty on two and then twenty-five on the other two? Is there a cer, is there a reason, or is that a typo?
It's probably the amount of lights at that school.
Okay, is that, is that something where, I mean, I know that...
If one, the ones that go over the highway...
Right.
Those are more.
Okay.
Just things like that.
I thought, I knew they were, when we were going through this...
It's just the type of lights.
That's what I, I mean, I figured they had something to do.
It's either the amount of light or the type of light.
Is this something that we have to, to upgrade anyway, is, is, because of the state? I figured it was, but...
I mean, again, it's, it's, it's working now.
Right.
But to change the times on them and they're, I know it's aggravating for people when things, you know, when they're on or we're not at school or something, but you have to actually go out to the poles.
Every pole.
Every pole that there's light on and change it on the, on the pole. Whereas the new lighting systems, Jamie can sit at home on Sunday night on his smartphone and program them in.
And it's, and that's really not, it, when they send out the school calendar, I could do it right then and put every day they're gonna be out at one time and leave it and it does it without anybody having to mess with it. We can put every day, just, you know, spring break, whatever day they're out, we can input it soon as that calendar comes out then.
Well, this is something that we, I, I had, I don't know if it was you, Jamie, I talked to, or I talked to somebody about it, after that wreck that we had at Dover a couple of months ago, from what I had, of course, I know the gentleman had a, uh, something happened medically, but, but I know that people were calling me and telling me that a lot of times coming up that hill, that, that light's harder to see, so, I mean, it's one of the things too, where, you know, is it something that we need to make sure that it's very visible, visible?
You said the lights, which did you say was most expensive, the ones over the road?
Over the road, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, if, if you're saying the state is working out some numbers to give you some, how much money to give, possibly? None?
I mean, they, they don't give any capital, I mean, it's in our, I'm sorry, Mr. Nguyen...
TESA plan has some capital money in it, but, I mean, it, it's a drop in the bucket.
But it, it, it looks like to me you need to know something, that's how much you're getting to go to the county commission, say, now, the state is gonna give us this amount of money, can y'all help us out with this amount of money?
I mean, the state's gonna give us fifteen million dollars and, and expect us to run the schools, run everything in the school system with it, and they're gonna say, that's a, a choice of ours, whether we hire teachers or we, we build buildings.
That, that amount could change too, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the population.
And depending on our population, right. So, that's what, that's, that's the other thing, is every year, we don't know if we're gonna have kids moving out or moving in and, and that's, that...
I mean, our population, state pretty steady for a long time, I mean...
I, I'll say this, uh, no school system in the state depends on the state government to do their building or capital projects. It's just a small part, they don't, they don't, like Mr. Nguyen said, they give it, they, I guess ours this year, fifteen million dollars comes from the state. Now, it has to be spent on some things, but that's, that's it. They don't give you another three million for capital projects, so you have to spend it on capital projects. That's, that's left to the counties to take care of their buildings and things like that. Does that make sense, Darryl?
Yeah, but, but you said, you know, on the ca, on borrowing money on there, is what, five percent?
Mm-hmm.
Ooh, and we've done some, some things, what, a half, or recently, one percent?
Because they're energy savings things that the state has a...
They qualify, they have, they have to create an, an energy, enough energy savings to fund themselves is basically what it, it amounts to on an EESI loan. In other words, you're gonna get back more than you, as, as much as you've paid over the life of the project, you're gonna get back that money back in energy savings. So, you, what we'd have to do is we'd have to have a study done to show that chiller at Dover Elementary was gonna save enough money to pay for itself.
What about the gym AC units and the air handler replacement? Could that be if we did a? I mean, is there?
The reason they're not in a Trainee project is because they didn't make money. That's, that, that's why they're, they're still left on the table. If they, if they qualified for ESI, we would have been, we would have already started the project. You know, and it's worth exploring, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying don't, don't explore it. It's worth exploring because a lot of years, the ESI program doesn't get, they don't lend out all of them. They're allocated so much money a year to lend.
Right.
If they don't allocate all their money, then, you know, sometimes projects get through that, that might not have gotten through at the beginning of the year.
Well, that's just, I mean, because I mean, again, if we, if we could, you know, like CTE AC, you know, middle school AC, uh, you know, Dover, uh, gym AC. And even like the CTE air handler recommissioning, I mean, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, that's, wouldn't that kind of be, it would kind of all be in the same thing, right?
Same ballpark.
Ballpark.
Again, it's.
Had to see.
You've got to have an engineer say that it'll, it'll pay for itself.
Got you.
And of course, on all, every school, y'all know if you've driven on our park, I mean, at some point, we're going to re, refurbish our parking lots. And that, that, put, we put that on there, but that's not the highest of priorities, but it's going to have, it's going to have to be done. We, we patch all the time, and, uh.
Is that number, is that accurate?
That's, that's a guess, I mean.
That's a guess, I mean, that, that's not, and all these numbers, you notice, not every estimate we got from a company rounded right to a zero. So, I mean, we, we did, we did that, we went high, probably just a little bit on all of them, if we weren't, didn't have a firm number and rounded it. That way we'd have, you know, pretty clean numbers to work with. And these are all subject to change. I saw what happened during the pandemic when, uh, the prices of everything, I mean, it just, so, you know, it's, uh. I think, tell me if I'm wrong, Jamie, I think it's the turnaround on units and things like that are a little bit better than they were when all this.
And they've gotten better, yeah.
I mean, it's not like it.
Gotten better.
It's gotten a lot better because they've gotten caught back up, I think.
And paving is going up every day.
Yes.
Very, very expensive.
And you know, we, we paved the, we paved the area over by the annex with the county, and went in a partnership with them. And, uh, paid, got, and the, where the health department is and the board office, we went in a partnership with the county, and we just did that out of our normal budget. We didn't have to do anything special. But to do like Stewart County High School, that's a, that's a lot of paving.
It's a lot of money.
Is there anything on here that, that y'all think that I need to, we need to talk about some more? It's, we can go to the middle school if you'd like to, that's the page with the, with the black. These, the units at the middle school are, again, we're, we're having to do a lot of work on them, that's the, that's where you, the, where we can't get parts for, right?
That's the units.
You need some school.
Yeah, that's the units that came from overseas, yes.
I think they came from where Maran or, or.
One of those Kekistan or St. Stan.
It's, it's some, and they don't even exist anymore, you can't even get them anymore.
Yeah.
So what our plan is, and what we're, we're, what we're thinking we would do is those go out, we're going to put split units like we have at North Stewart in each. Each room instead of trying to, and then with that, you'll have to, uh, we'll have to replace their handlers there like we did at North Stewart. Because they're, they're, they're getting to where they're, and that thermal, geothermal unit we have now at the, uh, at the middle school. I mean, y'all were in the meeting when Trainee, we talked about that, that's, you know, it's not, it's not going to last. I mean, it's already, and it's at the top of what it can do.
And that was another thing with the going to split units in those rooms. Doing that takes those units off of the geothermal system. You can take that completely, if you take forty units, well, how many ever classroom units it is, take those completely off of the geothermal. You're taking that much pressure off, off of it to allow it, you know, to maybe last a little bit longer, you know, just kind of get it down the road more than, uh, what it is now. And just get away from trying to just wean it off of that geothermal unit.
Are you gradually beginning to change the things out now, since, since those units are?
Once they go out, yeah, when, when they go out now, uh, we had enough empty rooms, uh, that wasn't being used, that when they went out in the past, we would just. You know, take parts off of those, or take a unit completely out and swap it out with a bad one. Uh, but now we're kind of, now that it's, once it goes out, it's done, we're going to swap it to a mini-split.
Which that, that cost will, that'd just be a gradual cost, I mean, we're not going to go in and replace all of those at one time.
We will probably do, just like we did at North Stewart, uh, there, we were doing like ten at a time. We would buy ten mini-splits, and then as those went out, we would just change out those ten, go back, you know, get some more. Uh, we didn't do them all at once, it wasn't, you know, a huge cost all at one time.
Looks like to me something's got to be priority. I mean, if, if we do, if we do four things at one, at each school, the top of the list or everything, somebody's got to be number one, ain't they?
Well, I think we, I think we've established that.
I mean, and, and.
Oh, exactly, the roofs, the roofs is number one.
At, at North Stewart.
Yeah.
And number two, and a close to, I would, I, in my opinion, and then y'all, you can tell me if I'm wrong, it'd be the chiller at Dover Elementary. Those are the two things, we can address some of these other things and, and later on, but we can't do it all in one year. I mean, there, there's no way. But yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to do, and that's what I want to make sure that, that we're all kind of talking the same thing. There's no doubt that the roof at North Stewart's the number one priority. And, and I'll just say this, we've put a lot of money in North Stewart over the last three years. You know, we put a, a, a whole, over a million dollars' worth of, uh, air, new, uh, dough ash units. We've replaced the gym roof, we, we've replaced gym units, we're, we're replacing cafeteria unit, and that's going to be replaced in this pri, yes. So, I mean, we're, once we get that roof taken care of, North Stewart should be good to go for at least. As long as most of us are going to still be either working in the school system or on the school, so. I mean, they'll be, it's going, that, that, that part will be done, North Stewart should be in good shape. Beside cosmetic things, I think, need to be done out there, you know, painting and things like that.
On North Stewart, if you're, if you're replacing everything, we're talking about brand new roofs, everything. If you do that like that, can they do it over the summer, they can do a lot over summer time while the kids are out there, can't they?
The roof?
The roof. Ain't that the one you're talking about, the roof, going all the way down to metal?
Yeah, I mean, that, you'd have to do that in the summer, and I don't know if it, if we could even get it done this summer. It would have to be, I mean, this is, this is going to take more than just a few months. I mean, I mean, it would have to be something, we'd have to move on fast to get it done in the summer.
You're asking, you're asking, if it can be done.
Can it be done in the summer?
They can get in.
Once they get on site, they, they.
I think it's forty days, I think that's the number he told me.
How many?
Forty.
Forty-eight.
Once they get on site, they go, they work seven days a week, and from sunup to dark. I mean, that, he said it's about a forty-day job on, on that, on a roof that size.
Do, do they still have summer school left there?
We're not going to.
So that would be somewhere, you could move it to a different location, I'm not having one too.
We didn't have summer school there last year.
Oh, what?
We had everything, we had everything at Dover Elementary.
Okay.
And we're going to have everything, summer school all in one building this year at the middle school for everybody. Just say it's a, it's a lot more convenient, saves money on transportation and everything.
Monica, I know we're on the Stewart County Middle School, and I know this is down the list, but, uh, can you explain the rekeying of the building?
Those are the original locks and the cores on them are, Jamie explained it, because I, I was.
The, uh.
Doing the same thing.
Okay, that was the only, on the only page, so I was.
Now, I, I don't know if y'all remember, just a couple of years ago, all the buildings got rekeyed to the black key, and then the inside key. The middle school didn't get that, um, and now, I don't know if y'all have ever seen the lock come out, you've got a core, one core key that fits. When you put it in there, it will pull the core out. Okay, that key's no longer working, so we can't pull the cores out anymore to change the lock. So I put that in there just to get them rekeyed, just like all the other schools, to get them away from those older locks, so we don't have so much trouble. You know, somebody's, you know, gets locked into their room, or gets locked out of their room, or leaves their key in their room. You know, we have to go up there and pry it open now, we can't just pop the core out anymore to, uh, get the, get the door open.
So that's the only school that's not been rekeyed?
Yes, ma'am.
Of all the schools?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
It's the newest school. You know, middle school was, that's why.
That's why it wasn't changed.
That's why I wouldn't put it at the top of the list to get it rekeyed.
Any more discussion? Do you got anything?
You got anything?
Uh, you know, I'll just finish with this, this, it may not look like, you know, we, we, we put a lot of work into, into identifying these, these areas. And I've depended on, uh, experts to tell us this, tell us these things. And, uh, you know, once we, if we can get these top priority things done, and we can get, you know, I'd love to do everything. I mean, if you did everything on there, I think we figured it up as twenty-five and six million dollars. So, you know, it'd be great if we could get a lump of money of six million dollars and we could take care of all of it. And these things would not have to be touched for, for years. But it's, you know, that, that's where we're going to have to do our homework and, and figure out a way that we can, uh, find ways to pay for it. Because, uh, you know, what we get from the state just won't, they don't give us enough, and, you know, we haven't asked for any new money from the, uh, any new money from the county for years. I mean, and now our tax, I don't want to mislead anybody, as tax collections revenues have gone up. You know, we, we get more because we, we get money from the sales and property tax. I think I'm right in saying that, considering it's right.
That is correct.
But we haven't gone and said, okay, we won't, you know, you know.
Another percent.
Yes, or another penny, or more pennies, or however, that's all done.
All right. Anybody got any more questions about, about this? All right. Um, you got director's report?
All right. I do have a director's report. In between the two meetings, if y'all would like to, there's some, uh, refreshments that we brought in for the teachers, we're honoring nine in tenure. It's over in the office, there's some cookies and things like that, there, I think there, were some, were they there, teachers that are?
Yeah, I heard some people came in.
Okay, so if you'd like to go talk to them, congratulate them, there are, there are some cookies and, uh, fruit tray and, and some, some stuff to drink. If everybody liked to do that between, between the meetings.
All right. I'll seek a motion for adjournment. Motion by Ms. Atlanta, taken by Mr. Gillum, all those in favor say yes, yes, those opposed, no, for adjournment.